And departments and really just to kind of give you all a snapshot of kind of where the Budget Committee stands currently and where we are going, you know, as far as recommending at this time. It's going to be a lot of information for everybody to kind of absorb, not necessarily looking for any decisions to be made this evening, but definitely want you all to know exactly kind of where we stand and where we're at as far as being towards a balanced budget. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Nancy Gonzalez, our CFO.
Thank you, Sean. Good evening, Commissioners. Did you hear me okay? You could hear me?
Yeah, better now.
Okay. So what I'm going to do is my focus is going to be on the PowerPoint, which has some level of detail, but I also just wanted to go through the folder that you have, what's in that. First of all, it's an outline of what we're, what is in the book. We have our budget calendar, which I'll go over during the PowerPoint. You have a copy of the PowerPoint if that's easier to follow along rather than the screen. There's a page of new positions requested and the recommendations of the Budget Committee. We also have a section where it starts off with a summary page of all the reductions the Budget Committee made to the budget, and it's a net adjustment because there are some items that we had to increase as, for example, capital improvements. When we fund capital improvements, we have to take that money from the general fund, but I'll go over that as we go through that. But if you look at it, it's by department. It's actually by line item, and it shows their current budget. It shows the requested budget, and it shows the adjusted budget and those differences. So it really just highlights the work that the committee did and the changes that we made along the way. There's also a summary report of the general fund, and that just shows our revenue, and it's just a quick reference. It shows all the departments within the general fund and what the current budget is, what the last couple of years' activity was, what the draft budget is, and that either increase or decrease by department. There's a revenue detail, so you could look at all the different line items. There's not a lot of changes, I think, that are necessary there. I think we've got it pretty tight. And then there's also expense detail, and this is again for the general fund. It's by department, by line item, so you could go through every area, like salaries, benefits, whatever you'd like to get into. And then we've also included the same for curbside, 911, the unincorporated tax district, and solid waste authority. So it's a detail on that. And then lastly, in your packet is a list of, or it's a spreadsheet of the capital expenditure requests from the departments and what the Budget Committee had recommended as being included in the fiscal year '26 budget and where that funding source would be, whether or not it would be SPOS 9, capital improvements, unincorporated. But that detail I'll go over in summary during the PowerPoint, but the detail is available for you to look at as well. Okay?
Mr. Goodman, since you just walked in, we're going through the packet there.
Thank you.
Okay, so I'm just going to get started on this. Is that not working?
Okay, so just to start out, a balanced budget, that's compared by state law, OCGA 3681-3, requires that local governments, our county, to adopt and operate under an annual budget, which is for the general fund, special revenue funds, the capital project fund, and each debt service fund in use by our local government. And a balanced budget is when the sum of the estimated revenues and the appropriated fund balance is equal to appropriations. So in other words, revenues have to equal expenditures in a balanced budget. So this slide is a depiction of where we were with the requested budget. So our projected revenues are $46,155,000, and the requested expenditures on the first round from the departments was $50,385,000. So that was a $2.8 million increase from the current fiscal year, which is fiscal year '25. That was almost a 6% increase. And the revenues, when we compare that to the current fiscal year, there's actually a decrease from fiscal year '25, and it's a decrease because in fiscal year '25, we're using $2 million of fund balance to balance the budget. So as this is presented as a draft, we have not included any fund balance. It'll just be a decision on our budget's cut, is fund balance used, are taxes raised, whatever the, how we could get to that balanced budget. But on the first round with the requested budgets compared to the projected revenues, we had a shortfall of $4,229,000. Should I use that one?
Yes.
So we have a shortfall of $4,229,000. Scott, this isn't working now. Yep, there we go. Okay, so with the net adjustments from the Budget Committee, which is $2,230,000, we brought a draft budget, that's what you have before you now, of $48,159,000. So that's an increase in expenses from the current fiscal year of $608,000, or overall an increase of 1.28%. And again, the revenues stayed the same, but that brings our shortfall to just over $2 million. And this is, I'm not going to go through every line of these. You have the detail in your packets. But this is a summary of the projected revenues for the current fiscal year, fiscal year '26, any increase or decrease, and also whether or not the percent of revenue. So that really the highlight here is the current year ad valorem tax and the local option sales tax, which are both highlighted. They make up about 75% of the revenue that funds the general fund expenses. And then, of course, at the bottom, you have proceeds carried forward. That's another way of saying you're using your fund balance. So when I say proceeds carried forward, it means using fund balance. And for fiscal year '25, we have that $2,072,000 budgeted, and we have a shortfall in fiscal year '26, and we have to figure that out. This is a graph of the fund balance from 2014 to present, and you could see during, you know, the recessions and how that impacted Camden County. In fiscal year 2018, recession and also some expenditures had brought our fund balance down to 1.5 million. That's no place we ever want to be. I would highly recommend, according to our finance policy, that we keep it at 25% or higher. And in fiscal year '25, we're projecting to use $2 million of fund balance. I don't know if we will by the end of the fiscal year. There's a lot of variables going on right now in different funding sources and when we'll receive things. And I have some grant information that I'll present a little bit later on in the PowerPoint. But if we ended up using all of that fund balance that we have budgeted, it would drop it down to $15.4 million, and that would be about 31% fund balance reserves, which is still above our threshold that we're targeting, but it is a drop over the last couple. You could see that it has dropped, so. And this is a graph of the net digest. You could see from 2016 to present, the growth has been about 91%. And just from last year to this year, it's about a 5% growth in net digest. And I also want to say the net digest, this is all estimated. This is information for the '25 tax year that was provided by the chief tax assessor. And at this point, the appeals, I don't think the appeals have gone through, so this is really a baseline estimate of what it will be. This is not the information provided by the Tax Commissioner, Beth Soles, so that will be coming in a couple of months, but we're basing it on this. This is a summary that we thought was interesting of the increase in expenditures by different groupings. There are specific groupings that we'll cover that were guided by the Georgia Chart of Accounts, but for this purpose, as we looked at all the constitutional offices, basically, there was almost no increase. It was 0.01% increase in expenditures when you combine all of the constitutional offices. The county departments, it's actually a decrease of 2.19%. The JDA, the way we're presenting the draft budget, they had requested more, but included in the draft budget is a $250,000 increase, and that's a 33% increase for them. All the state agencies such as DFAX, the Health Department, et cetera, that's a 2.84% increase. And then also the employee health insurances and workers' comp, that is a bigger increase of 12.54%. And, but the total overall, we're increasing the budget by 1.28%. So this is just a listing of the summary of the major changes that are included in the draft. Overall, like I've said, the expenditures have increased by $608,000. Payroll, there's two items with payroll that are big items. One is, we have discussed moving the pay scales that went into effect, I believe, three or four years ago. And we would be moving it one step, which would be 2.5%, and that would be effective on July 1st, and we're estimating that cost to be about $767,000. But in addition to that, we would still have a 2.5% increase on employee salary on their, due to their evaluation and on their anniversary date. So we're estimating about the same. Finance is working through that to really refine that number to be a tight number. So the next time we come before you, we'll have a better number on that, but for discussion purposes, that's what we have. We have a part-time position for full-time positions, and the way that that would impact the draft is salary in FICA would be for the general fund $187,000, and unincorporated fire $62,000. Other big items are insurance, our employee health. That line department increased by almost $500,000, and that's really to align with the current trend of claims. I believe $400,000 of that is increasing the claim line, and about $100,000 of that is the stop-loss in the admin policies that we have in place under employee health. Workers' comp budget is increased for claims also and the stop-loss of almost $42,000. Property, equipment, auto, and liability premiums, we had to estimate that at a 20% increase, which is almost a $300,000 increase, but we're waiting on the final quotes. And unfortunately, those quotes don't come in generally until the end of May or sometimes even in June. So we're waiting for those and hoping that that's a conservative number and that the quotes will be less than that, but that's what we used for budgeting purposes. The deductibles are the same from fiscal year '24 and '25, which are $350,000 for autos and $250,000 for liability insurance. And when we talk about our fund balance reserves, we have to keep in mind that those are our deductibles. So if something happened, that is what we have to come up with to cover that claim. So that's another reason to have fund balance reserves, is to cover any kind of claim that we need to fund. And this just talks more about the insurance premiums for property liability, sorry about that, property liability and auto. You could see from 2017 to what we're estimating 2026 to be is almost a 200% increase. And it really, I believe, started, we lost our travelers' insurance in 2024, so that's when it really started to go up pretty significantly. Additional changes for the public defender, he wanted to increase salaries and benefits of $58,000. That's included in the draft. And the district attorney had requested funding to $1,871,000. The draft as presented does not include an increase, but we thought it would best be determined and discussed by the board rather than us include it or not. Patrol, school resource deputies in the jail, the net decrease is $32,000. So when you look, start looking at your detail, you'll see a very large increase. I believe it's about a half a million for patrol. But then when you go to the jail, there's just about that as a decrease. I believe Sheriff Cheney had reorganized staff, so it's just moving from one department to another, but the net effect is actually a decrease of $32,000 across those budgets. The JDA had requested 1.4, $1,470,000 increase, and the draft includes a $250,000 increase. And transfers out of special appropriations, the capital equipment, the capital improvement fund is funded directly by the general fund. That's the only place the money comes from. And we had cut that down to $617,000 or $618,000. And also, the general fund has to supplement the 911 fund, and I'll discuss that further when we get to that slide. I don't want to repeat myself on that. Additional changes for EMS. Number one, there's a split of their costs between the general fund and the unincorporated fund. Each year, we look at the fire calls and make a determination of ambulance calls versus direct fire calls, look at the total and come up with, well, how much, you know, a lot of the firefighters are also paramedics or EMTAs or EMTBs. So we split their costs between the general fund EMS and the unincorporated fund fire. So in doing that analysis this year, the current year split is 90% to general fund, 10% to unincorporated. It's going to change to 88% general fund to 12% unincorporated. So you'll see when you look at the unincorporated, it's gone up a little bit, but some of it is just moving that percentage in that share. And also, the Budget Committee, we identified three positions on EMS that was being split between the general fund and fire, and just determined that they are more, almost 100% fire and would be best suited to be funded out of there. So we were able to move them out of general fund. On fleet services, there is an increase, and most of that is from the requested one part-time and one full-time position. One is a mechanic, and I believe one is a parts runner. On the county-wide library department, there's an increase requested for salaries and retirement. They're under the, I believe, the teacher's retirement system, so there's very specific percentages from them that raise the retirement costs. And then also, there was a request from the Woodbine Library for an additional $10,000 in funding, so it would be from $30,000 to $40,000. So this is just a summary of the new staffing positions. On the left are the ones that the committee came up with as recommended. And on the right, it's not that we're not recommending them, but we did not include them in the draft budget as it may need further discussion from the board. So on the left, in human resources, it would be a part-time human resource specialist, and there's one full-time position, and that's being reclassified to a part-time position. So it's really not an increase in staffing. It's really a reduction. In the sheriff's office, Sheriff Cheney had requested inmate work detail corporal and a professional standards sergeant. On the unincorporated fire, that's where we moved this new position, the fire training assistant, to be 100% funded by unincorporated fire. And on EMA radio, currently, there's a full-time position, emergency management specialist. And this position is being requested that it's upgraded to a deputy EM, emergency management and radio deputy. So the pay would increase, but also then that would be split between the Department for Radio Systems and the EM budget. So when you look at the radio systems budget, you'll see that that has increased a lot, but that's because this has been now moved over there as a portion of the 60-40 split. And I've already mentioned on fleet, there's a full-time mechanic and then also a part-time parts runner. And the position's not included in the draft at this point is at the clinic, a nurse practitioner EMS that had requested three firefighters. The district attorney had requested four ADAs, an intake clerk, three investigators, two legal assistants, and two victims advocate. And at Two Rivers Gun Range, a full-time office manager position was requested. So they are just not included in this draft. This is a summary of, and this is in your packets, both like this and also in detail. So this is a summary of the general fund, general government, and general government includes, you know, the boards, Board of Commissioners, finance, IT, human resources. And the total increase to the budget is 1.35%. On judicial, the increase is 0.82%. Public safety is, in all departments for public safety, it's actually a decrease of 0.18%. Public works is a decrease of 0.22%. Health and welfare, which is health department, mosquito, DFACS, and the senior center, has an increase of 3.51%. Culture and recreation is the libraries, and that has an increase of 8.46%. And Bryan Lang is a very small budget. So when they have a small increase, it looks like it's, you know, a 3.22% increase on the Bryan Lang is a lot different than on a lot of departments. But overall, it still is an 8.46% increase. Planning and development, and housing and development, which includes planning, county agents, forestry, code enforcement, and the JDA. The biggest impact there is the JDA, which results in an overall increase of 16.05%. So overall, at the very bottom, you have our budget increase that I've talked about of $608,000 with an overall 1.28% increase. So next, I was going to talk about capital expenditures. The requests from all the departments was $7.8 million. And after reviewing it with each department individually, we've come up with the capital improvement fund would fund $618,000. And again, that's funded by the general fund. ARPA, and ARPA funding, we still are funding that. There's a couple of projects still left with that. We have to spend all of that by December 31st, 2026. But everything is either under a purchase order or it's under contract. SPOS 9 expenditures, $1.6 million. Jail and staffing, $72 million. Unincorporated tax, $1.4 million. A lot of that is a tanker and an engine, I believe. Shared assets, shared assets are the forfeiture accounts that the sheriff controls. Impact fees of $56,000 and the solid waste authority of $425,000. And again, I know that a couple commissioners may have not heard this, but in your packet, you do have a very detailed list of all the requested capital expenditures. And I've noted which ones that the committee had come up with to fund and where the funding source would be. So this is the detail of that summary. Actually, hold on one second. Scott? This is not the most current. There was one I had sent maybe at quarter of 5:00 or 4:30. Do you have that? It just had a little bit more detailed information on it. It may have been, yes. Okay. Do you want to just cover it? Okay. Yep, back one. There we go. So as you talk about capital improvements and capital projects, many things are funded through grants that we receive. And this is just a summary. We all know that there's been a lot of changes with the Trump administration. I know at one point, everything was frozen. All the grants were frozen. And then within a day or two, I believe, they weren't frozen. So we've gone back and forth a couple of times. But Seth, do you want to just talk about each one of these?
Definitely, I can.
That would be helpful, thank you.
So we're, there's some delayed funding from each of the federal agencies up there. And I'll start with FEMA. So one is the Swift Current Elevation Project. That's the elevation projects that are happening on the north end of the county. And we are patiently awaiting a decision regarding that award. And it's right at $695,000. We're also waiting for reimbursement for the generators that we put in at the PSA and then at the substation, which is $142,000. We're also waiting on reimbursement for the hazard mitigation plan, which is $35,000. Also, we're waiting on reimbursement for the stormwater management plan that we just started, which is $210,000. And then, of course, we're having some delays in processing and getting the funds from Hurricane Helene and Debbie, which is $425,000. A biggie is, we're waiting, still waiting for the CDS funding that we got from Congressman Carter. We were just alerted this week that it has moved up in the grants management review at NOAA. And once that's complete, the U.S. Department of Commerce will commence a grant agreement, and they will send us the reimbursement for 1.2 million, essentially. Also, with the RACE grant that we got through the U.S. Department of Transportation, all U.S. Department of Transportation grants right now are frozen. And so as soon as we get the go-ahead from that, we'll start on that plan. And again, that's for $750,000. And then lastly, is the five-stand at the shotgun range at Two Rivers. And we are awaiting approval from U.S. Fish and Wildlife. We've got the signed agreement from both DNR and then the chairman signed as well. And as soon as we get that go-ahead from them, we'll proceed with construction. And that's $435,000, essentially, that we're, so for each of these, we are waiting for reimbursement or the go-ahead that we're going to be reimbursed for these grant programs that we've went after. And I will say, I think we should be really proud of our grants administrator. She's done a fantastic job of helping achieve these grants. So we're just waiting to get the money.
So this is another area that could affect our fund balance use and trying to project whether or not we'll have 2 million fund balance use in fiscal year '25 or more or less. Many of these are, like, the Resiliency Operations Center is a reimbursable grant. So there's already been expenditures made on that. The hurricane, the expenditures, yes, sir?
So that's about $4 million total from all of that?
Give or take.
Yeah. So what, I mean, we're having to pay that, right? So that's coming out of?
Well, some of it, I don't think, has been expended yet.
Yeah.
Some has and some has not. But for example, the Resiliency Operations Center, a great deal of that has been expended because it was a reimbursable grant. And now it's potentially on hold. The FEMA for the hurricanes, there's delays. I actually, right before this meeting, got a call from our GMA contact, and they have a check waiting for us. And I was hoping, and it was for $5,200, which is wonderful and we'll take it, but that does not come close to the $425,000 expended during the hurricane. So depending on when we receive this money, it may or may not impact the current fiscal year's fund balances.
But that's, and that's what I'm saying, is the possibility that the fund balance could get down to around $11 million in before this is said and done?
Probably not that low, because some of those have not been expended yet. Let me just go back to it.
So we're not going to start the five-stand shotgun range, which is, you know, $435,000, essentially. Of course, with the Joint Comprehensive Transportation Plan, we won't start on it. We have spent about $1,500,000 of the Resiliency Operations Center funding. And then, of course, the $425,000 from Hurricane Helene and Debbie have been spent. And we are starting now with a stormwater management plan. And the generator reimbursements for the PSA for $142. And then, right now, we're kind of in, and I'd say maybe in limbo with the elevation projects up on the north end.
Okay. So I'm just going to cover briefly some of the other funds. The curbside collections, if you could see the commissions and fees, that's, of course, the billing for your trash and recycling pickup. So we're projecting it's going to be about flat this year of $1.6 million. And the expenditures have gone up 6.7%. And some of that, of course, is salary and benefits, because we're trying to build in that 2.5% scale slide, as well as their evaluation 2.5%. And then contracted services, the majority of that is the actual, it's Meridian picking up the trash. So overall, the budget increase for curbside would be 6.73%. For 911, the commissions and fees, the source of that revenue is the $1.50 you pay per month on your cell phone, your landline, or your voice-over IP. So that's where the revenue comes from. But you could see the revenue is $1.2 million, but the expenditures for the department are $1.7 million. So of course, there's a shortfall. And this year, this would be 100% funded by the general fund transferring money in to cover those costs. In the past, this graph is showing you the light green are the revenues over the, since 2021 and what I'm projecting through '26. And you could see, it's almost flat. I think it did go up maybe $100,000. But it's flat for each year. The expenditures, of course, have gone up pretty significantly. And I believe 2024 was when we had a, the salary study for, we started the first salary study for public safety employees. So we've had a couple adjustments there from that study, as well as just a general increase in expenses. So the red, or orangey color, is, those are transfers in from the general fund. So you could see on the far right for fiscal year '26, that's the $550,000 that we would need to balance out that budget. And then throughout the past couple of years, the blue is using our fund balance. But I do believe that this year, although all the fund balance is not budgeted to be used, I think it will be used. And we'll have to even, we'll use up all the fund balance in fiscal year '25, and we may need to even transfer a little bit more money in there to balance the budget at fiscal year end. So I don't do that analysis until we get closer to probably June or July even. Because often, I come to you with budget amendments in July or August for the prior fiscal year. As the, as we work through all the year-end adjustments, things come up, and we need to make adjustments at that time. But for fiscal year '26, I believe it'll all be funded and supplemented by the general The next is the unincorporated service district. And what we pay for out of this is a portion of the fire, that 12% for fiscal year '26. We also pay for right-of-way mowing and some public works capital equipment. And also, recreation, the majority is down here, that $641,000. That's just an estimate, because we don't know what PSA is going to ask for their budget, but I just made an estimate on that. And then the $45,000 is capital outlay to make improvements to a couple of the parks. But overall, the increase to unincorporated is a 7.34% increase in expenses. Oh, and I also wanted to note on this, under revenues, and it's hard to see this pointer, but this line, the insurance premiums tax line, the second line down, we're expecting about $1.5 million in fiscal year '26. That has to be, it's a restricted revenue source within the unincorporated tax district, and it has to be used for either fire or curbside services. We generally use it for fire. There were a couple of years, the past couple of years, that we did apportion a piece of it over to curbside, but we're no longer doing that. But that money always has to be spent on fire. In essence, you're lowering your millage rate based on the insurance premium tax received. So I just wanted to point that out, that that has to be spent on that. So you always would want to see down here in this fire section that the expenditures are exceeding that. And the next is solid waste authority. And under the revenue portion, under the revenue portion up here, that $3 million, there had to be a way in the current fiscal year for me to designate the proceeds we would get on the loan as the construction we were drawing down on a GIFA loan. So that's what that $3 million is, has nothing to do with operations. So we didn't budget anything in fiscal year '26 for that. But you could see the commissions and fees are the fees to use the landfill. So overall, it looks like the revenue is going down about 40%, but the budget for the actual operation or the fees collected from the trash coming into the landfill is going down about 13%, 12.73. And we are budgeting down here for some debt service, and that's repaying the GIFA loan. So this is a calendar of the next steps. We're here at the budget work session for May 6. After this, there will likely be additional work sessions on the budget. But the goal is to have a proposed budget to you at a regular Board of Commissioners meeting on June 3rd. And the same week that I present that as a proposed budget to you, I also post it on the website for citizens to view as well. And it's posted by the end of that week. Then we have to advertise for a public hearing, and we actually have to hold a public hearing, which I'm hoping that we could do on June 12th. And that would set us up for adopting the budget on June 24th at a special called meeting. So that concludes my presentation. And do you have any questions?
Any board members have any questions for Nancy?
I don't know if I got it normal.
Normally, I can hear myself. Do you have a, was there an increase to administration or not? I didn't see a slide.
Yes. There was, let me see. So administration would be 1, 2, 3. The fourth department down, there's a 3.46% increase to administration.
Okay. But we decreased the Board of Commissioners?
Yes.
Cool, thank you.
You're welcome. But there is a lot of material in your packets that, once you start reviewing it, you may have additional questions as well. It's a lot. It's a lot of stuff.
For those who haven't been on the Budget Committee, you've got a lot of stuff to look over. And then we'll schedule another work session where we can hopefully cut some more or whatever the majority wants to do. Any other questions?
Got one.
Yes, sir.
Based on where we are right now, what is our fund balance? What are we going to have to pull out of our fund balance?
Right now, for, for the fiscal year '26 budget, that's what you're saying, okay. So that would be our shortfall here of $2,3270. So that would mean we either need to cut that, we need to use fund balance, or we need to raise taxes, because that would be the only other funding source we would have for that. And again, finances, the two big numbers are moving the pay scale and also, of course, the 2.5% that we give for the performance awards. Those are big numbers. So finance is working, you know, going through what all the departments had submitted, reviewing those, and making sure that those numbers are really tight. And so that, there is some refinements that may be happening. Like, the next time we come before you, it might be a slightly different number, but that just means that we've refined something. We're not cutting anything.
Okay, just for the sake of clarity, the state requires us to keep 25% fund balance, am I correct?
No. No, that's our policy.
What is the state requirement, Dan? I thought?
I don't know that there is a state requirement to keep fund balance. It's just good fiduciary practice to keep a minimum of 25%. Because a minimum of 25% is three months of operations. So similar to the situation we ran into at the end of calendar year '24, when the tax bills, which is an enormous funding source for the general fund, the bills went out very late from the tax commissioner's office, we needed our fund balance to carry us. And that's why it resulted in us getting a short bridge loan or to, or a tan, tax anticipation note to get us through those couple of weeks until that revenue started coming in. So there's many reasons to carry a fund balance. But I do not believe that there is an actual requirement from the state. I could follow up on that, but I don't believe there is one.
You've got to remember also, the fund balance is just a snapshot at the end of the year.
Correct.
But I remember in those classes that there was a percentage thrown out, and I thought it was 25, that the state, maybe they don't require it, but they recommend it, because it has something to do with our bond capabilities, those, our credit report, basically.
Yeah. That's one reason why we don't really want to keep using the fund balance as well, because that may affect our bond rating as well.
But even if you use that 2 million fund balance, you still, you're still sitting at 31%. Am I correct?
It would be less.
No, it would be less than that, because we would be, what I was projecting is what it would be on June 30 of 2025. If we use that 2 million that's currently budgeted, it'll drop us down to 15 and 1/2 million. Then if we have to budget another 2 million to get through fiscal year 26, if we used it all, that would drop us down to 13 million.
Okay.
So then we start getting a lot closer to 25%.
Okay.
But still above it.
This may be a discussion for after, but would you be able to, or do you know, what was the $2 million of fund balance we spent in fiscal year 25? Like, what was the reason?
The reason, one reason for about a million of it was to fund capital improvements, because our SPOLOST 8 for like vehicles, equipment, that, we had already spent all of that out of SPOLOST 8. So in order to buy those types of things, we needed to fund it from the general, the general fund would transfer that money into the capital improvement fund. So that was about a million. And the other million was, I did a budget amendment at some point after the budget was adopted. It was after the millage rate was adopted, we did the full rollback rate. And by doing the rollback rate, we reduced what we would be receiving in revenue by about a million dollars. So my budget was based on a higher amount. We did a, adopted the millage at the rollback, so the revenue came in less, so I had to balance the budget that, in that manner.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, you're welcome.
But the taxpayers got to keep a little extra money, a little extra of their money in their pocket instead of giving it to us.
By using the fund balance. Now, that's not regular practice, though. We don't intend to ever have to use fund balance regularly, correct?
I would recommend, for operating purposes, that, you know, just general maintenance and operations, that we not use, that would be my recommendation. It would be like using your savings to pay your rent. You really don't want to get in a position that you're using your savings to pay your rent or your mortgage.
It's a hard hole to dig yourself out of.
Pardon?
It's a hard hole to dig yourself out of.
It is. So, I mean, going just on a simple example of that, that's kind of what you're doing. But if you're using your savings to buy a vehicle, you know, maybe that's what you saved your money for. And I know I'm simplifying governmental fund balances, but that's, so often we do use it to fund the capital improvements when we don't have like a SPOLOST, but now we have another SPOLOST that was passed. So we make rely on that a little bit heavier than we have in the last couple of years as SPOLOST 8 had, you know, been spent.
As always, thank you.
Welcome.
Any other questions? Seeing none, we'll close this work session, and we'll start back up with the regular county commissioners meeting at 6 o'clock. Thank y'all.
Board of Commissioners meeting. I want to welcome the citizens of the Academy here with us tonight. And I also want to mention that there's an election coming up for the Public Service Commission. That'll be on June 17th, so pay attention to that. So with that said, join us for the invocation given by Commissioner Goodman and join us for a pledge.
Stand, gentlemen, remove your covers, please. Let us pray. Our Father and our God in heaven, we come to thee in prayer. We thank thee for the opportunity to meet in this assembly, to consider the matters before us, and we pray your guidance and give us wisdom as we make these decisions. Father, we pray for those who protect us in uniform locally and abroad, who stand in the breach between us and evil. Father, we pray for those who are sick and in need of your healing, if it be thy will. Father, we pray all of these things in thy name, amen.
A pledge to allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Katie.
All Commissioners are present.
Are there any amendments to the agenda? Hearing none, can I get a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
Do we have a second? Got a first and second to adopt the agenda, all in favor? Agenda is adopted. This brings us to the approval of the minutes of the April 15th regular meeting and executive session. If there's no changes to those minutes, can I get a motion to accept them?
So move.
Second.
Got a first and a second to accept the minutes, all in favor? Motion carries. This brings us to our presentations, who's giving those? Amen?
Good evening, my name is Amy. I have Kristin here with me with the Camden County landfill. We're both part of the Employee Recognition Committee. Each quarter, we request nominations for employee of the quarter through an online survey system, as well as by manual ballots from our workers out in the field. The committee then narrows the selection down to just one employee, which is always difficult. The employee we are recognizing tonight has been with the county for four years. During this time, she has become a valued employee, coworker, and friend to many. We are very fortunate to have her skills, knowledge, and enthusiasm on the Camden County team. I will now read a few of the comments from the nominations. This person is a dedicated employee who is always going above and beyond to assist with the needs of our employees. Her excellent problem-solving skills, organization, and great personality are a valuable asset to our IT team and the organization as a whole. This is from her director. She has gone above and beyond to support her team and the Camden County family. She has graciously thought of her teammates by bringing donuts to morning meetings, staying late for emergencies, and working on user issues while balancing her personal development and growth. She is an example of a great Camden County teamwork and reflects positively on our organization's image and reputation. Kayla Oliver from our IT department is our employee of the first quarter for 2025.
Commissioners, may I say a few words? Awesome. I'm very happy to be blessed to be a part of this Camden County team. It's been great. I love working with everybody, I love what I do, and please do your updates.
And have your family come up as well.
Who's doing the next presentation?
Hi, I'm Chairman. So at this time, I'd like to call up, and all of you can just kind of stand right here in the middle while I call you up, but any of the employees, as you know, Commissioners, we had a couple landfill fires right there before Easter and even after Easter. So for those of you that are from staff that are here from the landfill, fire rescue, EMA, Sheriff's Office, and I don't think we have anybody from Georgia Forestry Commission, but if you can all come to the center, please. So on Saturday, just after we had closed down afternoon, we actually had a fire breakout at the MSW landfill. For those of you that don't necessarily know landfill operations, if you get a piece of glass or everybody throws batteries away into their waist, and you get a piece of glass with the amount of sunlight that we've had, the drought that we've had, it gets pretty hot up there on top of that landfill. So a fire actually broke out at that time, and Fire Rescue responded. Initially, we thought we were going to be able to get it out with the staff that we had with dozers putting cover, which is dirt, over the trash. Then we quickly realized that the fire started spreading due to winds kicking up. The fire got to about two acres. We called in emergency ma-- oh, Public Works too, I'm sorry, Jared. Public Works team, they also came out and helped out quite a bit. But fire got to about two acres. We ended up calling in Georgia Forestry Commission. They responded very quickly to assist us, brought in a helicopter. The helicopter dropped about 700-gallon loads of water on top of the MSW landfill. There was no water runoff, it was all contained into the actual top layer of the MSW landfill. All of that happened between, you know, around, just around the afternoon of Saturday to the evening hours of Easter, and actually even extended probably closer to Thursday, Friday into that week just for the MSW landfill. On Monday morning, we experienced a small fire on CND landfill. And at the same time, Chester Island and Charlton County caught fire, I believe on Easter. And then Trail Ridge down in Jacksonville caught fire, I believe on Monday. So we had four fires, you know, two in Camden and then two around us that were pretty close by. And speaking of Campbell, there's been some other fires across the state here recently at other landfills as well. So just want to give a big thank you to all of you and those that may not be here this evening to responding. A lot of our staff, you know, really came in when they otherwise would not have had to, especially on Easter, the holiday of Easter, so we really appreciate all of your dedication. And I just want to give you a round of applause for thanking you for everything that y'all do.
Now we're going to have a proclamation for the Woodbine Library presented by Georgia House Representative Stephen Sains.
Good afternoon, Commissioners and citizens. I want to preface this by saying that this would not be possible, of course, without the continued support of the commission, so I want to appreciate that. Would you like me to read it in full or partially? It's your turf.
Up to you.
All right, well, I will, I'll be quick, but this is House Resolution 732 by Representative Sains of the 180th, Hitchens of the 161st, who's the Public Safety Appropriations Chairman, Stevens of the 164th, and Burchett of the 176th. A resolution commending the Woodbine Public Library and for other purposes, whereas the Woodbine Public Library, Inc. was established as a 501(c)(3) nonprofit public charity on November 6, 2016, following its incorporation to the state of Georgia, whereas the library originated as the Woodbine Library Initiative on January 2016 with the support of the Woodbine Women's Club and other organizations uniting the community in the pursuit of creating a lending library for Woodbine and North Camden County. And whereas, through the dedication of the staff and of the Woodbine Women's Club, the Woodbine Public Library has since grown into a thriving institution that fosters literacy, education, and civic engagement for residents of all ages in all of Camden County. Whereas, the Woodbine Public Library, Inc. has played a vital role in promoting both child and adult literacy in Camden County, providing essential resources, programs, services that empower individuals to expand their knowledge and enhance their opportunity. And whereas, libraries serve as a center of public education, knowledge, and community building, offering access to literature, technology, learning opportunities that enrich and strengthen us, as we all saw during the pandemic how instrumental our three libraries were. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the House of the Representatives that members of this body commend the Woodbine Public Library, Inc., its staff, and the Woodbine Women's Club for their dedication to literacy and community enrichment, as well as extend best wishes for many more years of success. Be it further resolved by the Clerk of the House of the Representatives is authorized and directed to make appropriate copies of this resolution, adopted March 25, 2025.
Thank you. This brings us to our next proclamation, recognizing the week of May 4th through 10th as the National Correctional Officers Week.
I have that, Chairman. Whereas, the week of May 4th through the 10th, 2025, is designated as National Correctional Officers Week, honoring the service and sacrifice of correctional officers across the country. Whereas, correctional officers with the Camden County Sheriff's Office play a critical role in the local criminal justice system by ensuring the safety and security of the Camden County jail and the individuals in their care. Whereas, these officers perform their duties with professionalism, integrity, and dedication, often under challenging and dangerous conditions, and are vital to maintaining order and upholding justice in our community. Whereas, correctional officers exhibit strength and resolve in managing individuals in custody, while also contributing to efforts that support rehabilitation and reentry into society. And whereas, the Camden County Board of Commissioners recognizes and deeply appreciates the commitment correctional officers make each day to protect our county and uphold the law. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Camden County Board of Commissioners does hereby proclaim the week of May 4th through the 10th, 2025, as Correctional Officers Week, and encourages all citizens to show appreciation for the dedicated service of these men and women of the Camden County Sheriff's Office who serve in these demanding and vital roles. And if we could have anyone here from the Sheriff's Office come up. Don't go far, Sheriff.
Okay, next proclamation is recognizing May 15th as National Peace Officers Memorial Day. You doing that one again?
Yes, sir. Whereas, Congress has designated May 15th of each year as Peace Officers Memorial Day to honor the federal, state, and local law enforcement officers who have made the ultimate sacrifice in the line of duty. Whereas, peace officers throughout Camden County put their lives on the line each day to protect the safety and well-being of our communities, serving with courage, dedication, and integrity. Whereas, we honor and remember the brave men and women who gave their lives in pursuit of justice and public safety, and we express our deepest gratitude to those who continue to serve. Whereas, the Camden County Sheriff's Office, Kingsland Police Department, St. Mary's Police Department, and Georgia State Patrol are comprised of officers who stand as guardians of our communities, often facing risk without hesitation in the name of duty and service. Whereas, their contributions are essential to the safety, security, and quality of life of Camden County residents, and their sacrifices shall never be forgotten. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Camden County Board of Commissioners does hereby proclaim May 15th, 2025, as Peace Officers Memorial Day, and encourages all citizens to honor and remember those who have fallen in the line of duty and to support the dedicated peace officers who serve and protect our communities every day. And if we could have you come up again. Thank you.
All right, this brings us to our legislative update. It'll be presented by our Deputy County Administrator Seth Collins and Georgia House Representative Stephen Sains.
Thank you, Chairman. I want to thank Representative Sains for coming and presenting the Woodbine Library tonight with that resolution, and then also coming to give us a legislative update. We're going to partner this together, but we're going to start off with Representative Sains with his update first.
Thank you, Seth, and thank you, Commissioners. That, um, can y'all hear me okay? All right. I want to highlight that the past year, I've been proud to represent Camden County for the last five years in the legislature, but I have never seen a more proactive commission in Camden County than this past year. And I don't only say that because y'all didn't request any local legislation, but I think this is the first time an elected delegation came up to the county, to the State House, and I want to encourage, being the furthest county from the Georgia Legislature official delegation of the county, but being the furthest county from the Georgia Capitol to continue that proactive effort, it makes our jobs as a legislature much easier when we're looking at appropriations and policies that benefit Camden County. I just want to highlight about five major pieces of legislation. I know Seth has a much more comprehensive overview of what counties in Camden County officially requested, but these are about four or five items that are significant enough to citizens to be aware of and ensure that they take proactive measures to deal with. For those who, in the audience, who want this in a comprehensive way, there's a one-pager in the back that I'm happy to provide anyone. But the military retirement exemption, which is still waiting for the governor's signature, is beneficial to all veterans regardless of age, as long as it's military income. And if it's $65,000 per spouse, but also $100,000 per year. if it's $65,000 per spouse, but also $130,000 if two spouses have served in the military. I want to highlight for all citizens that this is kind of in parody to how we treat retirement income if you're over 65. We know that veterans, especially in Camden County, are leaving to other states that have more favorable tax codes, and these are highly sought-after secondary workforces that the base wants, that all, a lot of employers want. We want to be sure to retain them, and this is seen as a prime way to do so. The Police Foundation Tax Credit, which is in the same part, I won't highlight this as much until the governor signs it, but this was an effort to ensure that, something we did two years ago, which is basically allow a citizen to directly appropriate their dollars instead of sending it over to the legislature in Atlanta, but allow them to put their tax liability into a foundation for, whether that be the county sheriff's office, the city office. However, the reason that many rural counties, including areas in Camden County and Glenn County, have not done this is a high threshold to do this, a lot of operational costs. So we're, this works to make this much more attainable for smaller communities versus the metro Atlanta region. The income tax rate cut, which is part of a historic, comprehensive $8 billion communicative tax relief since '22, this puts us on track, again, to be at 4.99%. And I'll just say, for history, in 2019, our tax rate in Georgia was 6%. So you see a very positive movement. And at the same time, this is a flat tax. Georgia's one of the only 14 states that have implemented a flat tax. That is seen especially for small businesses and entrepreneurs. It's a lot easier to digest, it's a lot easier to understand, and it closes a lot of unintended loopholes. But this is seen as a, we're one of the most competitive states because of that. At the same time, having a flat tax is a lot larger of a fiscal burden when we reduce that percentage. So my hope is to be at 4%. That'd be the top three states. The top state in the southeast right now, North Carolina, beats us at 4.25% for their flat tax. If we go down below that, that's an increased competition and barrier, but that is a $1 billion fiscal impact, so just keep that in mind. And then, I believe, second to last, the tax rebate. This is actually for, you should see this, six to eight weeks after you filed this year. So this was proactive, and to qualify, a citizen has to have filed a 2023 and a 2024 state tax, filed their state tax. Had a tax liability, because again, Georgia's restricted in terms of the gratuities requirement, so it comes to your tax liability. So this is up to 500 per family, up to 250 for single filers, and up to 325 for head-of-household filers. So this is something, if you, for some reason, do not see this as part of your filing, our office is more than happy to reach out to Department of Revenue on your behalf. Again, wait six to eight weeks after you've filed. It may be due to that overall tax liability not being there, but we're more than happy to liaison on your behalf for that. And then finally, the child tax and dependent care credit. Georgia's one of several states that parallel the federal credit, which is aimed at, of course, childcare, which we've seen at an historically high rate. We used to be at 30% of the federal rate, whatever you got, you got 30% on your state taxes. We upped it to 50%. This is for children under 13, or if you have someone with a disability, a spouse or a child, at whatever age, who you take care of, you, again, qualify for 50% of what you qualify for your federal rate. There's some caveats and details to that. Of course, you want to talk with your tax professional, but we're happy to give you the overview of that law. And just prior to giving Seth the hard job of detailing a very comprehensive agenda, I want to highlight that the local legislation process is still a tool to your disposal. It's not meant as a rubber stamp, of course. It's meant to submit to your state delegation, which we have the benefit and the burden. I'm the sole member of your House delegation, and Senator Hodges is a sole member of your Senate delegation. That's a benefit in local legislation, a hardship in general legislation when you look at numbers. But ideally, that's a conversation we start in September and October. If you see a need for local legislation, that's the best time to do it, prior to the legislative session. And we can, of course, it covers a variety of topics, but it is a legislative tool to your disposal. Some items are required to go through the local legislative process. Some can be either home rule that you do yourself, or you do it through the state process just for an added step. There's several reasons for that. But again, I thank you for allowing me, Seth has been great to work with, but thank you all for allowing me to take up some of your time today and talk a little bit briefly of what we've accomplished for our citizens jointly.
All right. Thank you, Representative Sands. It's been great to work with your office and our entire local delegation. I want to thank Commissioner Cheek and Commissioner Smith for going up to Atlanta with me to advocate for Camden County for our legislative priorities. So if you guys remember, in January, we passed our six legislative priorities, and they were to increase Lamig funding, increase the state bidding threshold, require state agencies to give notice of intent if properties come off the county tax rolls, and that's in response to our valued partner of Georgia, Department of Natural Resources, with them just continually buying land in Camden County. Also for reimbursement for EMS services, mental health reform, and then lastly, rural site development initiative funding. So priority one, increasing the Lamig funding. The state increased our Lamig funding through the local road assistance grant. Camden County received an additional $588,000 this year for road improvement, and this requires zero match. So that was a legislative win this year. Also, we had a big legislative win with House Bill 137, with increasing the state bidding threshold from $100,000 to $250,000. So this will allow some smaller-scale projects to proceed without having formal bidding, saving time and administrative cost, and it will provide a better flexibility for us in the county to continue to have routine infrastructure improvements. Next, for requiring state agencies to give notice of intent, there was no bill dropped. Unfortunately, there was really no movement on this, but we're very thankful to Representative Sands for supporting this concept, and we'll continue advocacy in the future. Nextly is reimbursement for EMS services. Now, this isn't exactly what we pushed for, but I will say this is a win. We'll be able to get reimbursement now between zero and 10 miles from point of patient pickup when our EMS goes to pick them up, and that's through House Bill 68. Next, mental health reform, another one that's not exactly what the county was looking to do, but this is an area that the state tried to improve, was through Senate Bill 132, which mandates a court hearing before ordering a mental competency evaluation. And so it introduced a shorter evaluation period for violent misdemeanors, which is 45 days, and allows for automatic dismissal of charges if the accused remains incompetent after 120 days of treatment. And then lastly, the Rural Site Development Initiative funding, House Bill 67 as well. The Georgia General Assembly increased this funding for fiscal year '25 at an additional $20 million, which is another win for us. Lastly, or next, there are some bills that passed that will affect us here in the county. So House Bill 513, which is service delivery strategy revisions. It expanded the eligible unincorporated revenue sources for county services. And so what that did, it allows us to use solid waste franchise fees, cable franchise fees, alcohol excise tax, alcohol licensing fees, the hotel motel taxes, and zoning fees as well, and part of our SDS for the unincorporated areas. Next is a big win, House Bill 532, the State Forestry Commission Grant Disbursement. So this revised the State Forestry's commissions grant distribution process, and it allows counties with over 20,000 acres of unimproved real property owned and maintained by the Department of Natural Resources to qualify for additional grants. And in our county, VNR in the state owns over 30,000 acres, so we will qualify under this. Next, a pretty big one that'll have a positive impact on Camden County is Senate Bill 68, which is the governor's tort reform package. Among this bill, it allows evidence of a plaintiff's failure to use a seat bill is now admissible in court, influencing liability assessments in vehicular accident cases. It also limits damages for medical expenses to the reasonable value of medically necessary treatment. Also, attorneys are prohibited from suggesting specific compensation amounts for pain and suffering during trials, potentially, which would, should produce jury awards. And lastly, civil trials are now divided into two separate phases for determining liability and damages, which may streamline, which will hopefully streamline proceedings and reduce litigation cost. So the governor's tort reform bill is very beneficial because it'll help limit excessive liability exposure for the county. House Bill 92, which is just a cleanup of House Bill 581, which I know everyone in the room knows this was really big last year. So some of the changes that came was with the homestead exemptions, the application deadline is extended through the 45-day assessment appeal window. The floating exemption limited homestead up to five acres of immediately surrounding land. One big thing is the rollback rate requirement, which was, counties were given two options. One was being taxed, and the authorities must submit a certified estimated rollback rate 15 days before assessment notices. If not, the estimated rollback rate is not certified, the prior year's mileage rate will be used, and that's what we did in Camden County. The prior year's mileage rate will be used. And then, one big change was the opt-out, opt-in adjustments. Local governments must revote to opt-out of House Bill 581 in 2027 or default to inclusion. Remember, we did vote as a board to opt-out of House Bill 581, and then opt-outs, of course, require three public hearings and a resolution. Opt-ins will allow, be allowed annually through 2029 if we decide to jump back in. Some other bills that passed is House Bill 85 with a Superior Court judicial compensation reform, House Bill 90, which increased the COVA acreage limit to 4,000 acres, House Bill 155, which is annexation arbitration process revisions, House Bill 331, the prohibition of roadside animal sales, House Bill 614 authorizes local ordinances limiting fireworks, Senate Bill 16 allows commissioners to act as bail bondsmen, House Bill 164 repeals the sunset on increased truck weight limits, House Bill 179 is the digital recording court reporting, and then House Bill 426 is nonpartisan elections for magistrate and probate court judges. That's just making that statewide. In Camden County, our probate judge and magistrate judge are both elected nonpartisan. House Bill 199, protection of personal information of judges and their spouses, House Bill 351, revision of local government permitting for landfills. This is really changing for those, for new landfills. Not a lot of change for us. House Bill 423, the next generation 911 implementation and oversight, House Bill 516, authorization for some members of library boards or community service boards to participate in meetings via teleconference. House Bill 68, which we went over with the governor's tort reform, Senate Bill 99 updates the definition of law for our law enforcement officer, and then House, Senate Bill 199, the State Ethics Commission's revisions to candidate qualifying and disclosures. Some of the study committees that were created for this year is about House Resolution 29 and House Study Committee on Funding for Next Generation 911, the House Study Committee on the State Border Registration of Used Motor Vehicle Dealers and Used Motor Vehicle Parts Dealers, the House Study Committee on Improving Access to Internal Medicine in Rural Areas, the House Study Committee on Election Procedures, the Senate Height Restrictions Surrounding Georgia Airport Study Committee, the Senate State Fair Tax Study Committee, and the Senate Study Committee on Artificial Intelligence and Digital Currency, and lastly, the Senate Study Committee on Franchise Fees. And so next, we'll go over some bills that failed to pass the 2025 session, and there's quite a few, so just bear with me. So under general county government, House Bill 75, which is a court order requirement for euthanizing unrelinquished impounded animals, it failed to pass. House Bill 147 for AI inventory on local governments. House Bill 295, requiring local governments to compensate property owners by waiving sovereign immunity, so we're definitely happy that that failed to pass here. House Bill 305 restricts corporate interest in single-family dwellings. House Bill 319, public employees subject to prosecution for immigration violations. And then House Bill 397 and Senate Bill 175, which was the omnibus bills for elections. Continuing on, employee protections for elected officials of House Bill 524, that failed. House Bill 555, corporate investment limits on residential property. House Bill 604 to authorize manual ballot recounts. House Bill 661, enhancing penalties for voter registration violations. Another big one that comes up every year is House Bill 646, the coroner pay mandatory minimum salaries, that failed as well. Senate Bill 15, the nonpartisan elections for county governing authorities. Senate Bill 214, authorizing in-person absentee voting, and Senate Bill 303, expanding state education board's roles, I'm sorry, state election board's roles and responsibilities. Now moving on to the public safety and the court bills that failed, House Bill 180 requirement for probate judges, House Bill 246, qualification requirements for the office of the sheriff in the state of Georgia, House Bill 225, repeal of school zone speed cameras. I know that was a hot topic this session. House Bill 578, increasing the end monthly 911 charge assessed by local governments, and Senate Resolution 282, the joint study committee on the 911 fee increase. Moving on to revenue and finance, failed bills, dispense renewals requiring a local act, House Bill 186 with eliminating the title avalorum tax for inherited vehicles. Also, House Bill 244, an audit extension and hold harmless for counties on annual audit if noncompliance is due to their constitutional officers. House Bill 297, exempt commercial side-by-sides from avalorum taxes. House Bill 429's interesting, exempting all vehicles currently under the TAVT system for the birthday tax. House Bill 456, restore estimated taxes and allow for appeals after their tax bill, and then Senate Bills 43 and Senate Resolution 55, increasing the COVA acreage limit to 6,000. But if you remember, I said, stated earlier, it was increased to 4,000. And that's all that I have. If you guys have any questions, thank you.
I have a question for Representative Sands. So as you know, Camden County decided to, we've, sorry, we voted to opt-out of HB 581. With the cleanup to the language, is this something that you would suggest us looking back into?
I would, of course, suggest any local government look back into. House Bill 92 was something we worked extensively on because I got feedback from all our governments that there's a lack of clarity, and I would define all our governments as fiscally conservative in my district, which includes Glenn County and Camden County. I think I was also fierce, as much as I'm a fierce advocate for that uniform floating homestead exemption, knowing that I think the county actually has a more comprehensive and a stronger homestead, this is a minimum parallel. I would suggest still that the county look at it because, especially because there's no, what I would say is a positive, restricting funds to ensure that the public has it and more in their pocket. That's not so much the store in Camden County, but what I would say is a reason to look at it is to ensure that Camden County is classified under the governments who are within that exemption, so, or within that opt-in. I think that will become important classification in the future. And of course, none of us can hold a crystal ball, but if the state starts making policy related to exempt versus nonexempt counties, I would hate for Camden to technically be exempt when they actually offer their taxpayers a better deal. So I think that is part of the reason, that lack of clarity was a part of the reason I strongly supported and worked on 92 with our Ways and Means Chairman Shaw Blackman, is to ensure that counties like Camden aren't penalized, for just ensuring that they're already doing the right thing. I think it's a different story in Atlanta for why they're saying no versus Camden. I think the feedback I got from commissioners is, hey, we want to ensure we're not tied in 30 or 40 years with how this looks. And I think you've seen the state, just like Seth said, this cleanup bill. We came back and looked at what our feedback was from our local governments to ensure that we're giving, we're doing this tool, which is a good tool, in the right way for our local governments, and that's your determination to make if y'all go back, but I would, of course, encourage it.
I just want to thank you on your work on bringing savings to the taxpayers of Camden County.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right. Here are none, we'll move on. This brings us to our first public comment section of the night. It'll be limited to three minutes and agenda items only. Anybody registered?
Not for the first, but I do for the second.
Okay. All right. Does anybody from the public wish to speak before the board? All right. Here are none, we'll move on. All right. Now we need a motion... Now, we need a motion to adjourn the regular meeting and convene a public hearing.
I move to adjourn the regular meeting and convene a public hearing.
Second.
Got a first and a second? All in favor? We're now in a public hearing. Joey, you want to start it off?
Good evening, Commissioners, and thank you very much. First, Commissioner, I'd like to welcome all of our Citizens Academy participants. It's always great to see you and thank you for participating in that program. Thank you very much. First item will be, well, the only item up this evening will be a request to rezone two acres from agricultural forestry to agricultural residential. This property is located in District 2 at 4613 Harretts Bluff Road. You didn't turn this off, did you? This slide shows the location of the property, which is located at the entrance of Deerwood Village on Harretts Bluff Road. This illustration shows the zoning designations which surround the property, which is highlighted in blue. As stated on your agenda, the applicant is requesting this rezon to reduce setback requirements for the placement of a new manufactured home. This is a site plan that was submitted to Planning and Development, which shows the location of the proposed manufactured home in relation to the new setbacks of the property. So, with that being said, Planning Commission does recommend approval of this item.
Okay, anybody from the public wish to speak in favor of this item? Come on up to the microphone, sir.
My name is Jacob Johns. My mom is Carla Coolen, the landowner. We're just asking to rezone it because of the margins, as Mr. Joey said. The way it sits now, with the margins being so narrow, the home will be placed at an angle versus squared up in the property. We're just asking for narrower setbacks so we could set the home square in the property. As you've seen in the previous slide, the home is actually going to be on the backside of the property. It won't even be visible from the road. We just don't want it in there crooked. So, it's already zoned for a mobile home. We're just trying to make it look right.
All right. Thank you. Anybody else wish to speak in favor? Anybody wish to speak in opposition? All right, seeing none, we'll move on. Now, we need a motion to adjourn the public hearing and reconvene the regular meeting.
Make a motion to adjourn the, the hearing and reconvene the regular meeting.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We got a first and a second to adjourn the public hearing and reconvene the regular meeting. All in favor? Motion carries. All right, you're back up, Joey.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Tonight, we have the request to rezone two acres from agricultural forestry to agricultural residential. This property is located in District 2 at 4613 Harretts Bluff Road, and Planning Commission does recommend approval of this item.
All right, can I get a motion on this item?
Mr. Chairman, I make the motion that we approve the property located in District 2, 4613 Harretts Bluff Road, from agricultural forestry to agricultural residential.
I'll second that. This is to rezone the two acres. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you, Joey. All right, next item. Chief, you're up.
I'm not going to let Joey outdo me. I also want to welcome Citizens Academy as well. Commissioners, Chairman, I come before you requesting approval for the Fire Emergency Medical Mutual Aid Agreement between Camden County and Glen County Fire Department. We currently have a mutual aid agreement. This is an annual renewal. And of course, as you know, we support one another, trying to help each other out, both counties, so requesting approval.
All right, can I get a motion on this item?
I move that we approve the mutual aid agreement with Glen County.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, we got a first and a second to approve the mutual aid agreement. Any discussion? All in favor?
Thank you.
Okay, Sheriff.
Evening, Commissioners, Chairman. I'm not going to let Joey or Chief outdo me. Hey, Citizens, I mean, thank y'all for showing up and going and being part of the Citizens Academy, and I will see y'all shortly at the Campan County Sheriff's Office when you get toward the jail. Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Joey.
Commissioner, I come to y'all tonight to ask for the approval to purchase a vehicle for the Campan County Sheriff's Office Warrants Division, which is a transport division, transport vehicle. It's coming out of funding source out of jail and staffing. We've already spoke to Nancy, I believe Debbie, if Nancy's in here, spoke to her this afternoon, and there is money in jail and staffing for that purposes, which is not coming out of general funds.
Can I get a motion on this item?
Make a motion to approve the purchase of the transport vehicle for the Sheriff's Division. Second.
All right, we got a first and a second to approve the purchase of the vehicle. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries.
Thank you. Thank y'all.
All right, Jared, you got some money for us?
Kind of. It's not for the chief and the sheriff and the planning director, all to suck all the fun out of the room by taking all the credit of, you know, welcoming everybody, but I'm all right. I'll just get down to business. So, in front of you is what Nancy spoke before, is the second year of the LRA, the Local Road Assistance Administration Fund, that Georgia DOT has given us an offer to submit to. So, in front of you is the application for you to sign regarding the 588,140 and 70 cents. We're looking to improve Coal Rain Road, hopefully from 17 to 40. It has a lot of traffic right now, especially with the bypass not coming through as quickly as we thought. So, we have a lot of traffic through there that we need to get that road improved so it's safer for everyone. So, that's exactly where we're looking to improve. So, it's in front of you for approval.
All right, I'll make a motion we approve this. It's middle for local road assistance.
Second.
We got a first and a second. Any discussion?
Does this include any widening or is it just straight overlay? Or what's the improvement going to be?
We're, we're going to look at widening, at least to get a beefier shoulder base like we did on Horse Stamp Church Road. But it's, it's going to be as far as we can get the funding to extend.
Well, it needs to be widened for sure. Okay.
Anything else? All in favor? Thank you.
Now, the second thing in front of you, or second item in front of you, is an acceptance of an agreement with Cow Farm Pond Incorporated for the purchase and delivery of clean fill dirt to the new Public Works Facility Site. So, we're considering the acceptance of this agreement or a purchase order for this amount. Clean fill dirt is required to raise the grade and prove the quality of the buildable land for the new Public Works Facility Site. Funding for this purchase is included in the SPOLOs eight building improvement capital budget. Just for a little, quick little history, we are approached by Cow Farm Pond Incorporated. They noticed that we were doing a lot of excavation, or a lot of civil work on our property, seeing that we were trucking in our own dirt to try to raise that property. They wrote, they approached myself, said that they were digging three one-acre ponds a quarter mile south of us, and that if, if we were interested that he could truck the dirt to us for $100 a truckload. And just for reference, our current vendor for, for construction aggregate for road-based material, when I, you know, get a truckload of clean fill dirt from them, it's approximately $400 a load. I'm approximately digging about $255 a load out of our own borrow pit on the northwest corner of the county. So, it was a good, a good deal, really, you know, local person, local vendor, and, you know, right down the road from us. That area, I don't know if you're familiar, but as I'm new to the area too, and I'm learning, that area south of Woodbine there normally doesn't have good buildable dirt. Usually, it's what they call gumbo or more of a topsoil sludge mix, so you can't build on it, or we can't really use it for roadbase. So, it was surprising that they were able to find that dirt and that quality of dirt in that area. So, it was really good and fortunate for us. So, we're looking to abide by our own purchasing guidelines and not exceed $100,000 because we weren't going out to bid, considering that it was more of a, kind of taking action for the now opportunity of getting that, that dirt trucked in. So, again, this in front of you is for the PO for approximately 900, or $99,900 to go to Cow Pond Farm for the purchase of dirt for our, our site.
All right, can I get a motion on this item?
I make a motion to approve with discussion briefly.
One second.
All right, we got a first and a second to approve the purchase order for the soil. All right, start your discussion.
Jared, I know that you pretty much have explained this. I did get a text from a concerned citizen that wondered if, if we would have put it out for bids locally, what would have happened?
So, it...
You're saying $100,000?
Sometimes you strike when the iron's hot. It was an opportunity. We wanted to see what we could entertain. We originally, I originally only opened up a PO of $17,000, thinking if I can get, you know, a little over, you know, a couple hundred loads from them and the dirt stays quality, we can keep that and then move on. The dirt, you know, stayed and remained quality throughout the process. So, the next step was to approach the administrator and Nancy on regards on what our limitations were on this kind of ordeal, because not only are we saving on the, the dirt and the opportunity to bring the dirt in here and now, but by bringing that dirt in here and now, we were able to use in-house staff to bring the civil grade of that property up instead of paying a subcontractor to do that later, when we have to get that grade up for the, the final building foundation.
Do you have any idea of how much this saved taxpayers? You said that normally it's four or 500 bucks a, a load, right?
So, just doing estimates from local vendors and calculations and that from online and rates that we're seeing, generally, 11-acre property that we're looking to develop, you know, you're looking at around $400,000 for, for really a contractor to come in, bulldoze the area, bring it to grade, and then, you know, clean up the area. We really brought that property almost a foot and a half up in grade. So, that really wouldn't have been that, in that price, but that's the general, you know, low, lowball price I was going with is really right around $400,000 is what it would cost a contractor to come in and, and grade and bring that property to grade.
And you're below 100, right?
With in-house staff and that, yeah, we'd be under 100.
Anything else?
The only thing is, just for matter of clarity and transparency, basically, we hopefully always try to use local contractors, if it's possible. And this guy is a local person, am I correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And, and the, the opportunity was there. If, if we would have made, you know, an effort to go out to bid for the same rates, he probably would have just shipped the dirt somewhere else to another buyer instead of being hassled with it. For him to sit on that site for 30 days, for us to get a bid out, bring bid pricing back, bring it to you for an award, there's just no way that that opportunity would have remained.
So, just to be clear, we always need dirt. We're always going to be buying dirt, and this was a good deal.
Yeah, it was just a good price for a good, good opportunity.
Anything else?
Yeah, if we normally bid this, we would make sure all the contractors had, you know, liability insurance, they were properly permitted. We're going to assume they are. Have you...
Correct.
Do you have insurance forms from, do they have proper permits to dig the pits? I mean...
So, because they were digging less than one-acre pits on each property, they didn't have to pull permits from EPD. EPD has a requirement on any pits that are over one acre. Normally, that's what the county looks into ourselves, is only digging one-acre pits because then we don't have to go through that formality, because it is quite a process. I'm on a, a pit that can be up to four and a half acres, and I'm almost 10 months in on the process of getting the approval to dig that pit to the full four and a half acres by EPD. So, it is, it does take a lot longer, and, and it does put a lot of speed bumps in the process of obtaining that dirt. So, getting under an acre pit is ideal, and that's exactly what this gentleman was doing. So, he didn't have to go through any of the permits or pull a permit for digging that pit.
So, he's doing just one, one-acre pit?
He did three one-acre pits through three different property owners. They're, they're all neighbors.
Completely separate pits.
Yep. Yes, sir.
There's no future of combining these into a three-acre?
No, they're three separate properties.
So, who's monitoring the quality of the material? Are you doing that?
Correct. My staff. We actually halted them at one point because we got a couple loads that were subgrade. I explained to him that, you know, we couldn't take dirt that was not going to be buildable. He apologized, the guys were loading out of a pile that wasn't supposed to come our way. It was the top, top couple feet of the pit. So, he, he actually comped us about 22 loads of dirt just for that fact that there was some miscommunication.
Okay.
I just got one more question.
Yes, sir.
Generally, in a year, about how much do we spend on dirt?
I normally have a line item of $200,000 for road aggregate, and that could be anywhere from dirt, 57 stone, sand, you know, any of the aggregates to make, to build roadbase. And then, we also, on the, on the other end of it, we have $10,000 set aside for, for costs, costs for surveying and permitting for borrow pits that we can operate throughout the year on, on properties throughout the county.
So, this 900, $99,900 is in addition to the 200 we already budget?
Correct, because we're actually going to bill this to the, the account for the building of the building.
For the SPOLOs, right?
Yes.
Thank you.
No problem.
Anything else?
Yeah, a couple more. Forgive me if I'm going on a tangent, but...
Go ahead.
We brought dirt in, we're going to bring this dirt in. At what point are we going to resurvey this site before it goes out to bid so we know what the final dirt numbers are? It needs to be resurveyed at some point, correct?
So, we're, we have, a survey team is coming out within the next week to 10 days, and they're going to give us the staking that's based on the plans that we have for the civil. And that way, the goal is, is that we can go out to bid, giving the contractor that we are going to be three inches plus or minus on final grade. So, that way, whenever they're bidding for the, the project, they know that we're within three, the plus or minus three inches of final grade for the building.
And this thousand loads is going to get us close to that?
We are, we are very close to that now with this thousand loads and, and with any additional dirt that we can bring from our existing borrow pit.
Okay, all right. This is not what we're really talking about tonight, but a couple things. One is, from Garmin Trucking, we don't need to be paying 400 bucks a load for dirt. Now, I understand the gravel and the, the base material, but we don't need to be paying 400 bucks a load for dirt.
So, so that was regarding, I'm sorry to interrupt, and I'll just, so we went out to bid last year for the first time in a while for a year, a year-long contracted price for road aggregates. So, I went out to bid, went through the entire gambit of the purchasing process, got competitive bidding for all of the, the different aggregates we asked for. One of them was not clean dirt at the time. Me being new to the area, I wasn't in understanding that dirt was hard to come by, that you can build on and build a road on in Camden. So, that fact, I, I reached out to Garmin just for the fact in midsummer that if we had storms that were, we already had storms that were backing up on us, that if I needed to get clean fill dirt because I couldn't operate our borrow pit because of just muddy conditions, what it would, what it would cost to bring it in and, and what it would look like. And that's when I ordered 10 loads of the, the clean fill dirt that they could bring in to, to satisfy what we would need, and that's, that's the rate that they would cost. So, it's not something that we're going to look at doing for a long term. It was literally just to see what the example of what they could provide during an emergency event.
Okay, that's fine. Because we can get all the dirt we want locally for 150 to 200 dollars a load, depending on how far you have to haul, that kind of thing. A hundred dollars a load is a very, very good deal. So, we need to take the deal. I'm a little uncomfortable we didn't go out and ask other dirt suppliers to give us a quote, although I know the quote would have been over 100, so I'm not debating that point. One more quick point is if we're spending 230 or 40 dollars a load for our own dirt, we need to look at the efficiency of that, and that's a subject for a different day.
Yep, that was something...
And I understand it's a long haul, you may be going halfway across the county, but 250 bucks for us, our cost internally is a... 250 bucks for us, our cost internally is a lot, so we need to look at the inefficiency of that, and that's a different, a different discussion.
Understood.
All right, anything else?
I never knew dirt could be so complicated.
Hey, man, it's all about dirt, right? Well, I will say, I will say this. Having been an engineering consultant for a long time, dirt is the, dirt can kill a project, because there's so much uncertainty in dirt, and where are you going to get it from, what the quality is going to be. And I've done dozens of due diligence packages for projects just like this, and sometimes dirt makes the difference between whether the project works or not, because of the volume. And this is a low site. You're probably filling three or four feet, maybe five feet at the building pad.
In some areas.
It's extremely expensive and difficult, so there's a lot more to it. And when dirt sounds like an easy thing to do, but it's, from an engineering standpoint, it's difficult, because that's an unknown, that you just can't put your finger on completely. Does that make sense?
And we've recently had the survey crew, or the civil engineer, come back out and re-look at the area, assess drainage issues, and reconvene on the site after we've done a lot of the improvements that we've had here. And they were pretty much blown away on how much we got done in-house to save us money on the new project.
All right, nothing else? All in favor? Motion carries.
Thank you, gentlemen.
All right, this brings us to our last item of the night, this appointment to the St. Mary's River Management Committee. We try and appoint somebody that lives along the river. That's the preferred. With that said, I'll move to appoint Dara Davis to the St. Mary's River Management Committee. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, we got a first and a second to appoint Ms. Davis to the St. Mary's River Management Committee. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. Calendar key?
There are no changes to the calendar, but I believe I noted the holiday of Juneteenth as on a Wednesday, it's actually on Thursday, just in your packet calendar.
Okay. County Administrator comments? Seth, you got anything?
I just want to say that we had a successful benefits fair yesterday for all our employees, that everybody came out. It was great that they were able to get some tacos and some ice cream and learn about the benefits that we have here at the county. But outside of that, that's all. Thank you.
All right, this brings us to our final public comment section of the night. We'll limit it to three minutes. You got anybody registered, Katie?
Yes, the first will be Ms. Laura Weston. Okay.
Good evening. My name is Laura Weston. I was here at previous meeting to voice my concern, and my concern was to digging out the ditch and to remove the trash and debris from my sewer, and to try to reinforce the driveway, to cut down on erosion, because when it rained, it would overflow my driveway and wash the dirt away. The last rain, it washed down my mailbox, so I'm going to give you an update to what has been done and how it's been done. So on March 24th, Public Works did come out and they replaced my mailbox. They replaced it with some asphalt and put it back down in the ground. So I'm thinking, that's a good reinforcement if and when the rain comes again. All right. My next update was PW came out and began to dig my ditches as such, which they're doing a good job. And when they got to the sewer, they cleaned it out and they reinforced it with rocks to try to save the dirt from being eroded when the rain comes. Okay. On March... On May, on April 22nd, I'm sorry, April 22nd, I met with Mr. Cheeks. He met me at my driveway to observe the work that Public Works had done, and they have done a good job for what they have done so far. But there was a question that I was concerned about, and he was also concerned about, and that is, why did they not complete the entire ditch? So this is what he and I talked about on the 22nd. So what, I got a message on the 2nd of May about that concern, and was told that the completion of the ditch is on their work agenda. And as for now, the update, everything has been done, except the completion of digging the ditch. But the work that has been done, it seems like it's a good job. Now, when the rain comes, then I'll know how well the job is, because this is what the problem was, when it rained, it would overflow my driveway as such. But so far, the update, everything has been done, except completion of the entire ditch. And when that is done, then we'll wait on the rain, and I'll see just what I have to come back for next.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Ricky Manning?
Lead Commissioner Rick Manning from Bullhead. Most of my concerns have been addressed, with Jared and y'all, with your questioning about no bidding process going on with the dirt. I'm highly opposed to not having bids go out to our local people here. I understand why now, and Jared made the right call, in my opinion, but I would like for y'all to press that everything gets bidded out, and when we can use local, use local. Now, I had one other concern about the fires at the landfill. Let's consider next time, because it's going to happen again, if we live long enough. I mean, that's part of landfills, folks, and when the landfill catches on fire, especially MSW, it's got toxic fumes. I don't care what anybody says, I've been here, done that, overseen them. Those fumes, I'm one of the blessed ones. I have a pressurized, purified room in my house that I sleep in, so I was able to get in there. Because in the mornings, for four mornings straight, if I didn't have that, I'd have had to leave. We need a better alert system for these, the constituents, that whichever way the wind happened to be blowing. You've got kids that don't know no better. Well, it just stinks, and they'll go out there and have asthma, and before they know it, they'll have a episode. I mean, I know better. But we do need to address that, maybe use the COVID alert system, and let's warn the citizens when something does happen. Lord forbid, we don't want it to happen again, but if it does, we need a better way to alert citizens. And that's all I got to say today, folks. Y'all done a fine job tonight.
Thank you, Rick.
Mr. Hattie.
Anybody else?
Yes.
Thank you so much for giving me an opportunity to speak. I'm one of the participants of Citizens Academy. I'm a small business owner, first-generation immigrant, came to America with big dreams and realizing those dreams every day. The Citizens Academy, I never knew that there is something like Citizens Academy, and one day I was checking on next door and I saw the advertisement and enrolled in the class. I just want to say that I am so glad that I did that, I'm doing that class. I'm learning so much behind the scenes, how the government works, and how much efforts all the staff members, officials, you all put into that, where our tax dollars is going. So I'm very happy with that, and I encourage, whomever I'm meeting, I'm encouraging them to attend that class. Also, thank you so much for everyone who is involved in that class and making that class possible to happen. Claire and her team, thank you so much. And also, one more thing I would like to add, that through the Citizens Academy, I'm feeling that I'm well-equipped and learning more every day, so I can help my community in meaningful ways. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else, Katie? Anybody else from the public wish to speak? Come on up, Carl.
My name is Colleen Winkle. I live on Harriet's Bluff. I'm here today to thank Shawn Boatright and the Commissioners for working with Lead Woodbine Partners by giving us the go-ahead to install little free libraries at the parks on the north end of the county. This is what they look like. We have now installed one at Harriet's Bluff Park, Mary B. Smart Park in Tarboro, and Maple Ford Park in Spring Bluff. We were very fortunate to have Mary B. Smart's daughter attend as we put up the little library. It was very special. So the little libraries work by committee members sharing books with each other. Take a book, leave a book, it's all free. Woodbine Public Library will also work with us with Lead Partners in adding books, all right? And these books were made locally by Mr. Winkle and financed by a grant to Lead from Southeastern Bank. Lead Woodbine Partners is a nonprofit organization formed to support the Woodbine Public Library and the northern end of the county through literacy, education, and the arts. We function through fundraisers and grants. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to speak? For the board. All right, here are none. We'll move on. All right, now we need a motion to adjourn the regular meeting and convene an executive session for the purpose of discussion items exempt under OCGA 50-143B4. This is information technology-related real estate and litigation.
So moved.
Second.
We got a first and a second to go into the executive session. All in favor? All right, we'll be back. All right, we'll be back.
All right, everybody ready? All right, now we need a motion to adjourn the regular, or adjourn the executive session and reconvene the regular meeting.
I move to adjourn the executive session and reconvene the regular meeting.
Second.
Got first and second, all in favor? All right, we're back in the regular meeting.
There's an echo.
That's a little, little delayed.
Good looking fellows up there. I don't know who the chubby dude is, the blue shirt is.
All right, we got any action from the executive session?
Yes, sir, we do. Ma'am?
Yeah.
I move to approve software renewal contract at an annual amount of $60,300 for three years totaling $180,900.
I'll second that. We had our discussion in executive session, all in favor? Motion carries. Have anything else?
I make a motion to join with the other four counties in the Brunswick Judicial Circuit in filing a formal complaint regarding the preliminary findings of the audit of the District Attorney's Office to the Prosecuting Attorneys Qualifications Commission and direct the county administrator and county attorney to work in conjunction with those other four counties in the Brunswick Judicial Circuit in drafting a formal complaint.
Second.
I'll second that. All right, all in favor? All right, this brings us to adjournment.
So moved.
I'll second it. All in favor? We're done. Thank y'all.